Okay, all right, welcome everybody. It's three minutes after. It looks like we have all of our Redmond School Board nominees present. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna amend the agenda just a little bit today so we can allow as much time as possible. Just kind of keep things moving. If we have time at the end, we'll just go ahead and do that at the end. So let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Feel free to mute your microphone, or you can stay live if you prefer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so next up is our invocation or motivational phrase. Who would like to do that for us today? Do I have a volunteer? Roland.
I've got a couple of short ones here I can share. This is one by Vince Lombardi. The quality of a person's life is in direct proportion to his commitment to excellence regardless of his chosen field of endeavor. And here's another one by a genius named Thomas Edison. Genius is 1% inspiration and a 99% perspiration. I think we've all heard that one.
Okay, so I'm sure you guys are all aware, but our speakers this week and next week are going to be our pending Redmond School Board nominees. So today, we're gonna be hearing from Sean Hartfield, Lacy Butts, Michael Summers, and Levon Medlock. I do find it important to note that some nominees declined to attend today's forum. And those were Rachel Vizanami and Carmen Lawson. It was either due to lack of interest or conflict of interest. And then Bob Perry has withdrawn from the running and has stated his support for Kerry Lopez. And then Michelle Salinas did not respond to our invitation. So, welcome to our speakers. We're just gonna run through a couple more things real quick, and then I will give you the floor. And then I believe we've got Dr. Sharon Klein with us today. And then I know, hi, and I know we had an invite out to Sheila Miller, but I don't see Sheila's name. Okay, all right. So announcements. The big announcements that I have today are, we've got officer nominations for the upcoming 21 to 22 administrative year. Those nominations are as follows. We've got President Josh Warner, President-elect Penny Pritchard, Vice President Chris Ritchie, Treasurer John Duff. Board of Directors are Anne Graham, Katie Mercer, Mike Sorenson, Dave Shirley, Roland White, and Nicole Guy. And then Foundation Board Roland White. So if anybody else is interested, please, to throw your hat in the ring, please let me know. We're gonna announce one more time next week, and then we're gonna vote on May 5th.
So I think we need to let people know that, yes, nominations are open this week and next. But if you're going to nominate somebody, be sure you have that person's permission that they're willing to serve. Most notably, we have five positions on the Board of Directors at stake, and we have six candidates for that. So there certainly is room for additional candidates for that, for those positions.
Yes. Thank you, Carl. Okay, all right, so let's, let's get on with the program. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to all of our nominees. Welcome. We really appreciate you guys taking the time to come and visit us today. Is there someone who would like to go first?
So Rachel, this is Levon Medlock. If it's okay, would you mind just sharing sort of what the format is? I've never done this before, so I wanna make sure that I'm playing by everyone's rules and how it's organized. Would you mind outlining sort of what you expect from us and how this will go?
Sure, absolutely. We don't really have a very structured format. It's more of kind of a question and answer type thing. Of course, if you have anything that, any thoughts or things that you would wanna share, please feel free.
Thank you. So we'll be responding to questions, not necessarily speaking. Is that correct?
I would say a little bit of both.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Rachel, if there's any way I-
We lose somebody?
Well, I have a question.
Yes, you keep losing me. Oh, are you guys there? I apologize. I keep getting cut out. This is John speaking. I'm actually at Sage Elementary right now, because I have to pick up my son at 12:15.
Rachel, I have a question for him.
Go for it.
I'm an ex-school superintendent. And we always had trouble getting candidates to run for office. So I'm wondering, why do you folks wanna run for office?
You're on mute?
I don't think so. Can you hear me?
No, I'm talking to the brother.
Is that better?
I can hear you.
Why don't you pick one of them to start?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. It's, it's something that, you know, I just thought, I don't get enough hate mail and abuse in my daily life from my wife and four children that I just might as well jump into the ring. Now, in all seriousness, I think a lot of us are in the same kind of scenario where we've been involved in our community, we've been running businesses, we've been trying to be good parents and spouses. And after last year, I think a lot of, a lot of things got kind of thrown up in the air. And a lot of us kind of stood back and went, you know what, I think I'm supposed to get involved in this. I can't think of a more hot topic or target-rich environment than the current after last year's shutdowns and all the different things, curriculum that are coming down the pipeline. I just, I found myself being pretty good at complaining and not really great about doing much about it. So I kind of felt a little check that I was supposed to step up. And I have the support of my wife, and my four girls are all in the Redmond School District. And I feel like we have awesome teachers and awesome administrators. And after the abuse of last year, from, from all opinion sides, I think our students and our teachers and our administration need, they need a lot of support, they need a lot of cover. You know, I'm not really an ax grinder or a sword swinger, but I felt like I was supposed to be a shield, if that makes sense, so that administrators and teachers can make the right calls and know that as a school board member, I would have their back and hold them accountable, but also just support them, because I feel like they're, they're pretty beat up and pretty tired after last year. Because it didn't really matter what the opinion was that an individual held, there was plenty of opposition to that. So I think we owe a lot to our kids to build, build this back and make up some ground from last year. And I just wanted to do it in a positive way, not in a negative way, because there's, there's plenty of that. There's plenty of opinions going around. And so I just felt like I was called to be a shield for, for leaders and administrators. And I grew up in the Central Oregon schools, and it was just the best experience ever. And I just wanna make sure my kids have that same opportunity, so.
If I can interrupt you for a minute, when you start speaking, be sure to identify yourself as to who you are.
I'll go next. Oh, we're gonna, we're competing for space. Go ahead, Lacy.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to say too, my, my internet is cutting out a little bit too, so forgive me if I have to pause for a second. My name is Lacy Butts, and I am running for the Redmond School Board. And so I have two stepkids in the public school system, and then I also have a one-year-old. And I've never ran for an elected position. But I think, like Michael was saying, after last year, I kind of just felt the need to get involved, and I wanna be a voice for a lot of other parents and members of our community that kind of feel like their voice has been lost. I do feel that the schools are circumventing the role of parents in some ways, and I do feel like they're pushing culture, morals, and ideological beliefs on our children. And I think they're overstepping their academic boundaries a little bit, so I'm a big advocate for parental rights. So that is one of the main reasons I'm running. And I also really want the kids to, you know, stay in in-person education. And I just saw the negative effects of online learning, and so many children falling behind. And, you know, it was just disheartening, so I wanna keep them, keep them in in-person education five days a week. Sean, did you want to go next? All right. I know she's picking up her kiddo, so wasn't sure how that would work, timing-wise. Hi, everyone. My name's Levon Medlock. I too am in the cadre of candidates running for Redmond School District. I am specifically running for position number three. I think each of us here today have our paperwork filed for a different position. There are four on the ballot this election, if I'm correct. I have had a long and deep interest in education. It's a value that my parents instilled in me from a very young age. They believed that a solid K through 12 education was a springboard into a future of endless possibility. And that's what I wanna be able to assure for our children and our community. I have volunteered as a youth tutor all the way back to when I was in college 25 years ago. I served as a ESL teacher for adult learners on the weekends in my early twenties. I currently serve on the Board of Reach here in Redmond. I've served on the Board of Start Here Preschool here in Redmond as well. So education really matters to me. I'm a first-generation college graduate. I understand that college is not the only means to a successful life full of opportunity. But I would like to bring that perspective and opportunity to our children. In addition to my undergrad degree, I'm also really proud to say that I'm about six weeks away from graduating from OHSU with a master's degree in healthcare administration as well. So education matters to me, and I have two children enrolled in the district right now. So as a participative parent and community member, I want to engage and be able to serve while I have kids in the district and while the district's decisions directly impact my family. I will say that there's a lot of focus, and rightly so. We've all been kind of through the wash-and-dry spin cycle for the last year, at least that's the way it's felt to me. But I encourage folks to think about electing folks into the school district that have the strategic view for the full four-year term. This is a four-year commitment, and I am committed to navigating not just post-COVID recovery and using my background as a healthcare leader to help us do that. And my background as a business owner who also managed the recession of 2008 very successfully. We need folks that have those immediate skills in a turnaround situation, which I possess. But we also need folks that are willing and able and qualified to be able to bring out the best in our youth, our teachers, our staff. Everyone's working really hard. I don't think any of us dispute that. But we also recognize that Redmond is growing quickly, the Shitskrat County is growing quickly. And what are we going to do as a school board to ensure that we're equipping our children to be successful 10 years from now? Those are the decisions that we'll be making in the next four, which is why I'm sincerely hoping that I will earn all of your votes, if not at least Mr. White, since I named my child Edison. So we have that in common. With that, I'll meet myself and hand the mic over to someone else. Levon Medlock, position three.
Thank you.
Of course, timing is never perfect, so my child's gonna be walking out here any minute. But I'm Sean Hartfield, and I've been on the school board for the last five and a half years, serving our community as your director. I have chosen to rerun because I see it as a valuable way to support our community. And in that five and a half years, I've had the advantage over most candidates that are running right now to get training that you need and is vital to understand what your role is as a school board member. As I was watching the applications come in, we're in a unique position right now in the Redmond School Board because we have four of the five positions up for reelection. I don't know that there was another time when this has happened. And our current board member, who is not up for reelection, is only in her second year. So having somebody that has experience in the school board to be a mentor to new school board members, I see as vital, beyond the fact that I have learned what it is as my role as a school board member. This is a nonpartisan position that we have to weigh three different points that I always think about when I make decisions as a school board member. The number one, definitely our kids. We are here because of our kids. So we have to look at any decision, and we have to say, is this going to be best for our kids? The other point I look at, and when we're making decisions, is for our staff. And that's our admin, it's our teachers, it's our classified staff, which includes janitors, school bus drivers, our secretaries. When we're making decisions, we have to make sure we're making decisions that, of course, benefit our kids and also benefit our staff in the school district. And the third point we have to think about when we're making decisions on the school board is for our taxpayers. And it's a balance act for all three. Our parents are absolutely part of that taxpayer base, and we have to make sure that the decisions we're making are acceptable to our parents and that we're really creating an area and a community that our parents want to bring their kids to. So we're really in an interesting position. A little bit more about me, beyond being on the school board for five and a half years, I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in finance, which helps me especially during budget season, which we're in right now, just starting. And then I also have a master's degree, like Levon. Congratulations, I have a Healthcare Services Administration degree. And part of what I've done for 25 years, I've been in the business realm. We own a small family manufacturing company out in Prineville. And, oh, sorry, my son's coming into the car. Say hello to everyone. And we also, I've spent 16 years in business as an employee benefits consultant. I wear many hats at our company. The main hat that I wear is in human resources. And I'm also a part-time teacher for Central Oregon Community College. So my diverse background in business, along with teaching, helps me, and being a parent, helps me balance those different things we need to think about on the board as we're making decisions. I'm gonna pause there, now that I have my son in the car and start driving, but I'll try to stay connected for, as questions come up. Thank you.
Can everyone state what position they're running for?
Number two.
Lacy, you're running for number two?
Levon, you said position three, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And since-
Michael Summers, position two as well.
And since Sean is driving, I'll share, she's running for position one. So Sean for position one, Michael and Lacy for position two, and then myself for position three, myself being Levon, also known as.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, and then Carl, I understand you had some questions prepared to ask the candidates.
Okay, it was not letting me unmute. So actually, I think that the candidates have already answered many of my questions. I think maybe we'd like to know, would each of the candidates have done anything differently in the past year regarding the pandemic and keeping the children tuned into the schools? Lacy, can you answer that?
Yes, so you're just asking if we would have done anything differently than what is happening now?
Correct.
I guess I can understand from the beginning of the pandemic, where, you know, we shut things down and we did go to online learning. But I was surprised in the fall of 2020 that the kids did not go back, especially when there were other states where the children were going back and, you know, they didn't seem to have major outbreaks, or there were also many daycares that stayed open from the very beginning, and also how children are not as affected. So I was surprised that the kids didn't go back to in-learning, in-person learning in the fall. So I guess that would have been something that I would have considered doing differently.
Levon, how do you answer that?
I could, I could see Michael getting ready to talk, so I was waiting. Would you like to go first, Michael? Okay. You know, this is, this has been a really hard year for all of us. You know, we haven't seen our parents, we haven't seen our grandparents. It's been tough. And working in healthcare, I actually ran the COVID-19 planning section for our FEMA response for 54 weeks. So I had sort of a front-row seat to all of the tremendous planning and the changes with the way that the pandemic was moving, you know, the logistics of it, the desire to keep our community safe, and just the unknown. This was a, this is a one-in-a-100-year event. And while I hope for a long life, I certainly hope not to be around when the next 100-year-one swings through. So yes, we're exhausted, but I am incredibly grateful to the teachers that tried to make the best. I had, I had a child starting middle school this past fall, which if you, anyone remembers how awkward that is, just imagine doing it on Zoom. So, you know, I am so incredibly grateful to our educators and our district for planning and keeping the health of our community at the forefront. I also recognize that we had lots of folks on the existing school board that would have probably, you know, maybe handled it differently if the Department of Education didn't have mandates in place. I think one of the things that we need to recognize is that school board as a governing body still has to follow the lead of the Oregon Department of Education. And I think that our group, our educators, our administrators, our superintendent did the best that they could with what was an evolving, sometimes by-the-day type of environment. So I have a lot of empathy. You know, I worked at the Mass Vaccine Clinic in January. I volunteered there. As I mentioned, I ran the Incident Command for St. Charles Health System for 54 weeks. It is really difficult to manage a once-in-a-century pandemic and maintain transparency and not have people mentally exhausted and fatigued. So, you know, hindsight is 20/20. Are there things that we maybe could do differently in terms of communication and how we manage things? Absolutely. But are, do I have, do I kind of take my hat off to the hard work that the folks did put forward, knowing that many of us would not have been able to walk in those shoes with the grace that they did? Absolutely. Michael, I'll pitch it over to you.
Yeah, I echo a lot of that. Last year was probably the most difficult year to be a leader, at least in my life, because no matter what you thought or what your position was, according to the internet, you were correct. And so you automatically, it's, it's almost 50/50, which is very sad. And I think one of my biggest disappointments was the lack of unity, because there were so many voices, there was so much contention, and a lot of it was driven by fear. I totally get that. We don't make good decisions when we're fearful. And that, that was driving the bus a lot of the time. And then you have leaders trying to stand and to do the right thing with the best information available, and, and 50% of the population is throwing spears at you. And I think that's, that is the hard call of leadership, that you still have to stand, you still have to take the shots when you know is the right thing, especially if not all the information is out there. I have a good friend that had very close ties with an existing president, and he got some insight. And he, he was talking about a situation where the president had to make a decision based off of information that only he and a small group of people were privy to. And without that information, it looked like a foolish decision. But the president had to make that decision, knowing it would look bad because it was the right thing. And I think that was a lot of the position our leaders were put in last year. There's a lot of information, also a lot of, a lot of policies put in place at the state level that was not even in the hands or as a tool for the, for the local school board. But nobody knew that, so they had to take the hits while still maintaining the state policy, and that is just a rough spot to be in. And I think last year was, one of the biggest problems probably wasn't communication, but just there are a million avenues for communication now, and nobody knows which one to trust. So I don't know what the solution to that is, other than trying to really make a really close connection. We still have a small enough community, I think, where we can do some, some, well, not face-to-face or one-on-one, but I think a lot of these scenarios can be, can be talked about, person-to-person, even over Zoom, whatever tools we have at our disposal. But just being able to, to have a front-row seat with my daughters and to see how the isolation impacted them, I think it seems to me that, that, that children aren't as a larger vector of transmission for the disease. And so the cost that they paid for not being able to be in person, as we all tried to figure it out, was pretty, you know, was, was pretty harsh. My main goal was to reframe the year for my daughters, to make it to where it wasn't the worst year of their life. But if, as they look back on it, hopefully their, their, their thought is, oh, that was really strange. But we weren't afraid, we weren't, we tried to be brave. And I spent a lot of time talking to my daughters about, about struggles in the past and how people rose to the occasion, and how they stepped up and they were brave, whether it's world wars, whether it's other pandemics, whether it's, I'm a rotarian, so polio is a big deal for us. And just seeing how people stepped up, I think this is the greatest opportunity to step up as leaders and to raise our kids to be the leaders that can step into those situations in the future and solve problems that we have no idea how to solve now. But that's, that's a really important thing, and I think just some reminders that, that it is scary and it is intense. But maybe we were, we were, we were born for this, and we just need to step into it with courage and, and be smart. We're not talking recklessness or anything like that. But I just, I wanna be that kind of leader that, that can take the hits and not take it personally, and to hear people where they're coming from, when they, when they lash out, a lot of the times because they're afraid. Or there's underlying issues there. It's not necessarily personal. So I would like to be that kind of shield for our administrators and teachers that can take the hits and still communicate effectively with people, and still try and knit our communities back together.
Sean, are you still there?
I am. Did you see me?
There we are.
I, I appreciate-
I, I appreciate that Levon and Michael talked long enough for me to get my son in the car, get out of the sage, crazy parking lot, and get home and reconnect on a computer. It's the life of a mother with three kids in three different schools right now, so. So the same question, I have a very different vantage point than the other candidates because I lived it with Sharon, with Mike. And, you know, Levon made a point, and I, I think she doesn't quite know everything that's gone on in the boardroom with our board members throughout this pandemic. Would I do anything different? No. One of the rules that we have as a board, as I was talking about it, I look at it and I think of it as a triangle that you're balancing, kind of on the top of a pencil, to keep everybody weighted and equal and rising up together at the same time. And one of those pieces of that triangle is being an advocate and a voice for parents, being an advocate and a voice for students. And what we saw through this pandemic was, yes, we have to keep people safe. I know my board role is I know that I cannot make a decision to change the laws or the mandates that come down from Salem, but I still have to be the voice of our community. And early in the spring or right after the pandemic happened and we closed the schools, we sent out a survey to our parents, talking about the fear and coming back to school if the opportunity arose. And 90 to 95% of our parents wanted their kids back in school. So I was that voice, and I spoke out, and I talked about it. I researched nonstop across the United States, across the world, on how in the world can we get these kids back in school? I talked to people, Sharon knows, I gave him lots of suggestions, can we do this? Can we do this? At the end of the day, I don't get to make that decision as a board member because it is a mandate of the state. And there are laws that are being passed down and regulations that I cannot change, but what I can do is be a voice for our community, and that's what I did during this pandemic. In the fall, we did another survey, and we found that less than 10% of our parents were going to keep their kids home. And the rest wanted their kids in person. So again, I started doing more research. How can we work with Deschutes County Health Department? Can we bring testing into the school? Sharon knows, I kept bugging him, kept telling him, hey, how can we make this partnership work so we can safely get these kids back into school because that's where they need to be? So from my vantage point, would I do anything different? No, I think I performed my role as a spokesperson for our community very well, and I will continue to be in that role, I hope, if I get voted in, and will continue to speak what our community wants, even if it's not the most popular in the media or because people are afraid to come back into school, so. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but I just want to clarify. So Sean, I think that you just validated that what I, you validated my point that the school board doesn't get to make these decisions. It is, yes, we advocate for our constituents, and that's absolutely spot on. But I just want to clarify that I think that we're actually on the same page with, with that, what the role of a board member is.
Rachel.
Yes.
I have another question for the board members, and that is, I just wondered if they could explain to us what they understand the funding process in the state of Oregon for our schools are. But you might know about the fiscal policies necessary to be on the school board.
Earl, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the candidate speak first. Other candidates, I should say.
Lacy, you're at the top of my screen, so let's go ahead and start with you.
So I am probably not as familiar with that, you know, someone like Sean who's been on the school board, but I am learning about that. From my understanding, the role of the school board is to, you know, participate in budget decisions, participate in certain curriculum decisions, and also hiring the superintendent. Would you say that is correct, Sean?
Yes. And Earl, did you ask about funding, how our schools are funded?
Yes, just your understanding of the funding process, and since you're on the board, I'm assuming you have some understanding of how the funding process works.
Lots of training. Have you met Kathy Steinhardt? She's a wonderful trainer, so I've had five and a half years of budget training. But I, I'll, I think, Lacy, if you have some understanding of that process too.
All right, I'm just gonna work my way down the screen. So Levon, if you want to go ahead and go next?
Sure, thank you. You know, I think coming in as a new board member, there will be a learning curve. There, as Sean mentioned, there'll be four new positions available on the board. I have ran budgets both professionally in my corporate world as well as when I own my own business in central Oregon. I've also, you know, looked right now, working with some community partners on the future of reach, and from a budget perspective, how we make that work for our community. And what I understand is that every time you come in as a new board member or a new leader, you need to take some time to learn the ins and outs of that particular environment. And I think that part of being a servant leader, part of being a humble leader, is understanding when you need to educate yourself and to be able to rely on experts for training. You know, Sean just mentioned someone by name that I imagine perhaps would be available to help with this particular training piece. No one joining the board is going to know all things. I think we all come with different abilities and skills. And perhaps the one that I come to the table with is being a lifelong learner and able to very quickly absorb new information and synthesize it and use it for the betterment of our community. So if I were to say, oh, I understand it totally, and let me teach you all about it, that would be a big fat lie. But do I have the capacity to learn it quickly? Just as I'm sure every incoming board member probably has for the duration of any school district in this, in the country? Yes, absolutely.
All right. I, I am in a similar position. I, I probably, my family's been in the, the wood products business for almost 70 years, and so I, I could probably tell you more about how it used to be funded by through lumber receipts and things like that. But I am getting a very fast training, and I, I look forward to the thorough training as well coming into this. Especially with things like the cat tax coming into play, there's a lot of things that are very, we're told to pay the tax, and then we'll tell you what it is and what it looks like, and so that's been very interesting. So I, I'm not super familiar with how the funding mechanisms in place work. I am looking forward to the training, and I am definitely not afraid to say when I don't know something. That's okay. I'm stepping into this. I am a fast learner. I, I try to get better every single day. These kinds of things are fascinating when they're in your lane, and if I become a board member, that is definitely gonna get a bunch of attention on my part. So I'm excited to figure out the ins and outs of that. I have a lot of, one, one of my mentors was the former principal at Summer High School, and she is a wellspring of knowledge, and that's been really fun, getting to know some of the history of how some of these things work. I'm, I'm getting all sorts of briefings on state standardized testing and all sorts of fun, very hot topics. So as soon as I feel like I'm not completely ignorant on some of those, I'll be happy to chime in on them. Hopefully, that's not the next question. If so, I defer.
Just because I've had five and a half years on the board, I'll, I won't let you assume that I know about school funding, but I definitely do. Going through the budget process every year that I've been on the board, and just starting up next week, we will have the presentation, I think, of the proposed budget. But it's interesting, in the state of Oregon, we still do receive some timber seats. So Michael, you're correct there, not a lot, but we do get a little bit. But anymore, and I can't remember the year, and Kathy could spout it off, and I think she might tell us every, every year as we talk about the budget, of when things changed in the state of Oregon for funding. So the majority of our budget comes directly from the state. And so when we're looking at what's proposed, and I don't know if we saw a new proposal for the school-state fund, the last one I heard of was at $9.1 billion, which of course is gonna be shy of status quo for all districts across the state of Oregon. And that is typically what we get for our general fund, and also includes Proposition 98, which was passed a couple of years ago, and also the Student Success Act funding, which it looks like, I think Proposition 98, they said they were gonna fully fund, but SSA, they're looking at, I think, a 68% funding. I can't remember exactly what it is in that whole pool of money that they're pushing out to the state school fund. From that state school fund, what happens is, was as our, we get paid on the population of our district. And so the first thing we look at is how many students do we have enrolled in our school district? And every school, and this isn't a question you ask, but it's a huge concern of mine, and I know it's on the weight of our district, and every district, I'm sure Sharon is going to be talking about it next week. Every school district in the state are, they're missing kids. And in our district, we're missing about 450 kids, and I'm looking forward to seeing with school going back in five days a week this week, that I'm hoping we recouped some of those kids, because what, the way I look at it is that's one of our elementary schools that we're missing because of this pandemic, because of the prolonged isolation of these kids and parents taking them out and saying CDL does not work for my kids, and I'm putting them in private or I'm gonna homeschool them. And so when I look at the budget, I think, ooh, because I know we're paid on a per-kid basis, that that's about $4.5 to $5 million that we're not gonna have in funding if we don't have those kids back. It's been a concern all along. I've asked Kathy during budget meeting, or during meetings, where are we at? What are we looking at? Because we have to be prepared for that. And in a small community like this, Redmond School District is the largest employer. So that's a big effect to us. So beyond that, I could get into more details on the funding. It's on a per-head basis, a per-student basis, but then we do get weights for kids that have disabilities. So it's not exactly weighted the same amount for every kid, so that has an impact on our budget also. And I know in the past, and I don't know for this year, but we typically looked at about 11% of kids with disabilities in our district, so that added more revenue to our budget. How much further do you want me to go, Earl?
That, that's fine. I really appreciate that, that the budget is a big issue, and oftentimes, particularly when they have these things like the pandemic going on, they forget about that. But that's a very important role, and you need to understand it. I appreciate all of your answers.
Definitely, being a finance major, I am interested in it, maybe not as much as Rick Bailey, who is a CPA, but I, I definitely watch our money, and it's important to us. And, and running a small business, a family-owned business, it is, you know, it's vital. And us being the largest employer in Redmond, it's important, the decisions that we're making, because it's going to trickle down and affect every other business in our city. So. Alan, you had a question. Is it for everyone or just me?
Well, actually, it's for everyone. So I'll ask my question. This pandemic has showed a larger gap between those students who thrive, those families who thrive in education, and those who just have not. And there's a lot of catch-up some students are gonna need to do. So Dr. Klein is gonna have a real challenge to figure out how to close that gap. So you all have children in school, so you have thoughts on how we can help with that? I'm interested in not necessarily your role as a board member, because it is gonna be to support what Dr. Klein decides he needs to do, but what do you think, what are you gonna tell them?
Can I just answer real quick? Alan, there's gaps with students that traditionally always did well in school also. So the gaps aren't just with those traditionally that weren't doing well because of maybe their scenario or learning disabilities. But what we've seen through this pandemic is that we have kids that were straight A students that are failing or were failing. So it's a huge issue that we have to identify where those learning gaps are throughout the system, and then put our resources towards those kids that have fallen behind. And I have privy, and other candidates might not, that, you know, we have federal funding that we're receiving in order to try to minimize that gap for these students, and one of the things that I'm absolutely in supportive and we're doing and going forward with is summer school, which I think is vital to find those kids, assess their learning gaps, and then offer them something to help them as we move into next year.
I'll go ahead and chime in as well, Michael Summers. I, I think part of it is, I've watched this with my, with my four daughters, and each one of them is very different. And they have all responded differently to this, and in kind of surprising ways, and I think we've all known people that have surprised us with how last year affected them, people that I thought would rise to the challenge crumbled and vice versa. I, I think part of it is, is a, is a, as a gap of hope, I guess is probably a good way to say it. There are a lot of, a lot of weighty things that are being placed on the shoulders of our kids that I never had to deal with. I, I can't think of a single existential crisis I had to deal with as a student. I got to be a kid. And, and I, I'm not suggesting kids just need to be oblivious to this, but they are carrying a lot of emotional weight. I mean, we have, we have race relations, we have all sorts of different topics, we have COVID, all these different things that are come to a head in a single year, and those are being placed on their shoulders, and I think it's prematurely. I, I feel bad for them because adults aren't carrying this weight well. And as a child who is supposed to be able to, to be, you know, we're obviously building future adults that can carry weight ideally, that can solve the problems of the future. And I think they're getting this weight at an early, early age, and they don't have the strength to carry some of this, and so you see, and then you have isolation on top of that. So you see the emotional weight, which affects your physiology in dramatic ways. So, so the cost, the cost that we've paid emotionally in some ways far outweighs what they would have, the, the cost had they actually gotten the virus. And, and I understand all the complexity of that, but I think we need to give our kids a hope that, that not only, not only is there a future for them, that regardless of, you know, all these, these existential crises that we can't actually solve on an individual level. Okay, here's something you can do. Here's something that you can step up and affect in your own community. Let's focus on these kid-sized problems, and let's go after them, and let's achieve them. And, and then we'll, it's counted as a win, and let's build from there. So by the, by the time our kids are, are grown, they have the muscles to be able to shoulder weighty subjects and to, to be able to, to take us forward. And, and I think that, that's partially a leadership gap on, and I don't mean that, I, I mean, I mean that across the board, not, not school leaders, not, I feel like politically, there was a lot of leadership fails last year. And so I really think that, that has a huge impact on this disparity between, between kids that are performing well, kids and kids that aren't, and we really need to almost case by case, as best we can do that. I know that we have to service a lot of, a lot of individual students and the parents, but a lot of this stuff is gonna be individual level, and we need help with that. And I don't know if that is building a coalition of volunteers through the community. Obviously, background check is, all the different things, step through the process, but we need a lot of help. And, and I would love to get that kind of engagement from the community, because we all recognize. I think that's why there's so many candidates this year for school board. because we all recognize, I think that's why there's so many candidates this year for school board, uh, is because we all recognize our kids need some serious help and we need some leaders to step up and help, uh, and to stand in the gap for them and to provide them with a hope and to encourage them that, yes, this is hard, these are big, big problems, but you got this, you were born for this, let's take this on. What can we do? How can you help your friend, uh, who is, who is really depressed? How can you, uh, like opening up these lines of trust and communication? Um, I think is really huge and being able to connect with kids on an individual level. I don't know if that's surveys, I, I've seen various things floated around about doing a, a, a statewide school survey of children and their, the impact of COVID nineteen. Um, but that stuff is crucial and what, i- if, if these kids aren't emotionally healthy, they're not gonna be able to perform a, a, a test of any kind. I mean, that's, this is the building block uh, level stuff where if this isn't where if the foundation of mental health isn't there, I don't know what they could achieve. Um, so that, that's a huge issue for me.
Thank you, Michael. All right, have we heard from everybody on that topic yet? We're at about six minutes left, so we need to wind down.
I haven't spoken yet.
Okay.
Um, I will just say that, um, real quickly, I was fortunate enough to be able to stay home while our kids were doing the online learning. And um, you know, I would say that they probably were on their computers one to two hours a day when they were, you know, at first they were doing all online learning and then when it got to hybrid, the days that they were home online, they probably would only be, you know, one to two hours a day. And I do agree that every child learns differently and it's heartbreaking to think of children that, you know, don't have anyone there just to talk to or for emotional support. And I have been talking to the kids, you know, going to school means more than just learning. You know, it means interacting with your friends and, you know, teachers being in person with them can recognize more, you know, if something is going on with the child, I feel like they can be able to recognize that more as opposed to across, across the screen. Um, so I do think it will look different for every child and I did not, I was not aware of the summer school program that Sean mentioned. So that is encouraging and it is encouraging that there is federal funding coming to help because I think it's gonna take the effort of, you know, parents and community and everyone to really step up and recognize that our children are essential and they need help.
Rachel, um, if Lacey's done, I haven't had a chance to respond. Can I do that real quick before we wrap up?
Go ahead and then I believe Josh Warner's got one more question and then um, Dr. Klein is gonna wrap us up.
Okay. Um, the good news is our kids are back in school. Yay, right? Um, I have middle schoolers that are back full-time, starting Monday this week. Um, I know high schoolers are back as well and elementary school kids have been in for a while. So we've already surmounted that huddle, that hurdle, excuse me. And what I would, you know, to, to Sean's point of the three-legged stool, uh, let's not forget that we have talented and gifted educators throughout the district who are experts in assessing loss of learning and can be our partners in helping us craft strategies to catch those kids up. Children are resilient and I think that if we are supportive of, if we understand their needs, if we work with our experts who have dedicated their careers and their lives to educating our children and we create an environment in which they can recover from um, the loss of learning, they will be okay. It's our responsibility to advocate for them and figure out what that gap is and put into place a strategy that will help close that gap. Summer school might be one option, um, and there might be others. So, you know, p- partnering with the people that do this for, um, as their career calling, I think is also an opportunity that we have. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, my question is actually for Dr. Klein. But before I ask that, um, I first wanted to thank you guys for doing what you're doing. Um, I think all four of you have an uphill battle. Regardless of who gets elected, all, all you candidates are great and very well qualified. And um, we appreciate hearing from, from all of you. I think it's fantastic that you're willing to be a public servant in that regard. Um, you know, COVID is just one of many issues I think you guys are gonna face moving forward. Um, but my question to Dr. Klein is actually twofold. Um, first, if you could touch real quick on why the board is only five people? I think that the school board is, is dynamic and diverse in a lot of ways. And having four representatives, I'm just curious as to why. But secondly, what other, outside of COVID, what other um, struggles do you anticipate with a brand-new board, right? Four out of the five are gonna be potentially brand-new? Um, just curious on your feedback there.
Sure. So thank you, Josh, I appreciate it. And let me start by, by saying the thing I, I wanted to say at the end is that, um, I want to thank each one of our candidates for applying for the school board. Um, it, it's a difficult job and it's a volunteer job and it's a job that I do my best to make it easy on you, but it's not. It, it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of energy and, and you have to learn a lot. And um, I mean, the learning curve is, is just non-stop, there, there's a lot to it. I, I always look as a school board as, as being the representatives of the community. Uh, you know, in the role, I am truly their only employee. And so um, it's a, it's an interesting thing to be, to do as from a board's point of view because uh, they're, they're dependent upon me to work through uh, their, their will, if you will. And it's an interesting, it's an interesting place to be, right? Um, as, uh, as Michael said, uh, yes, you get hate mail uh, over decisions that you didn't make really and didn't actually have a lot to do with, yet um, people are angry at you about it. Um, the COVID uh, deal is really, uh, you know, um, I, I would say that, that uh, a lot of folks still don't realize that, you know, there, there's an executive order in place. There's been an executive order in place for a year. The governor basically took over, um, over local governments and that uh, put us all in a bad situation, is that everybody wanted us to fill our roles of making local decisions and yet we're really only in the place of trying to carry out the will of our state. And that, and that has been an uncomfortable place for all of us, those of us in administration and those of us elected. And uh, and the folks, um, uh, your, your elected school board members worked very hard at that and did a good job. And I just want to say that. And I, again, I appreciate everybody for that. Okay, why only five people? So traditionally in um, the state of Oregon, uh, boards are elected by the people. The board's job is to uh, establish and provide citizen oversight of, of the school district. Uh, it goes way back to the beginning of Oregon when settlers came in. Um, five members were sort of the standard amount of folks. Some boards you'll find around the state have seven or there is even one that has nine. Uh, those usually come from districts that were consolidated districts. So for instance, Sweet Home District at one point was a bunch of little bitty school districts and when they combined them together into one school district, every little school district got a couple people on the board. And so it expanded out to nine. Um, if you see a board with seven, uh, often it covers a, a larger geographic area. Um, there's many school boards around that have, have wards. Uh, like if you look at the Portland School Board election right now, there's, you know, section three has one person, section two has one person. All of our school board members are at large. So even though we have positions, you don't represent just the geographic part of the city. You, you represent the whole area. So it's just sort of traditional with, with the five. Um, school boards have the authority to add more, uh, kind of working through the electoral process if they choose. Uh, most people don't, uh, the school boards get more and more cumbersome as they get a little bigger. You think it's hard to make a decision with five people, you should try it with seven or nine. So, so that's uh, answer number one. Uh, answer number two is, what are the challenges besides COVID? Believe it or not, being a school board member is extremely challenging, even when there's not a global pandemic going on. Uh, there's everything to know from um, school finance and I would say that, I would say that a, a school members, a board member's job is dominated by school finance. Um, primarily because there is simply never enough money, um, for all the things that people want. Uh, there never could be enough money for all the things people want because everybody wants everything, right? And so we have to make decisions, we have to make decisions as administrators and as school board members, what we're going to fund, where, what are we going to prioritize, what are we going to, to put into place? Um, and always with decisions like that, despite listening and doing your very best, unfortunately, there's winners and there's losers with that. Um, you know, where do we put, where do we put our money at? And so um, those are, those are huge challenges. Um, you know, nobody has mentioned the staff real, or very few people have really mentioned the staff through the COVID. Um, you know, the, the staff have a unions, they have several unions and they have particular points of view about all these things as well. Uh, and they have legal processes they get to work through and, and part of my job is, is keeping the peace a little bit, trying to balance out ideas, trying to work it forward. But a lot of that comes to the board as well. There's, the, the board isn't, even with a vote, isn't completely free to put things in place because they can have the backlash of all the employees. And so we work through that to try and, try and create a harmonious atmosphere um, where we're, we're utilizing the strengths of, of this really well-educated and experienced workforce so they can work, work well for their kids. Um, then there's a, uh, you know, we're in the midst of the culture wars. We have uh, arguments over uh, things that, that I usually are somewhat inconsequential, but um, you might have a, uh, somebody mentioned a book earlier, perhaps a book, and I've been through this experience before, so I specifically use this. Um, maybe there's a book being used in a class that half the community hates and half the community doesn't and, you know, a whole bunch of people show up at the school board meeting and yell at you for a while about it and uh, and the board's like, alright, um, what do we need to do about this? Um, then they usually turn to me and say, Dr. Klein, we want you to do something about this. And we put some, put some processes in place to work through that and that's fair. Um, there's a lot to it. It, it, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of technicalities to it. Um, there's a lot of team building to try and figure out how you work with your, with your board, um, how do they gel together and, and come together? Uh, and, and it's important that the board represents the community, right? Uh, maybe your, your, um, you know, your superintendent's got a, some kind of um, great idea that he wants to put in place, but it offends half of the community and so I go to put it in place and people are angry. You know, the board's gotta tell me, hey, Sharon, that's not the best idea in the world. It's maybe not the way we're gonna go forward and we, we talk about it and decide what is the right path forward to try and do what's right for our kids. So um, it, it's, it's challenging. I, I, like I said, I appreciate, oh, your husband's from Sweet Home, that's nice to know, love him. Um, so um, anyway, there's a lot to know, there's a lot to do. It's a fairly complicated job. Um, unfortunately, uh, people come to, to the job thinking they know because they've been in school. Um, my advice to all of our board member candidates is please come to the board meetings. Please come to the budget meeting next week, um, get a sense of what the board does and how they work through it. Um, it's a, it's, it's really kind of a fun process, it can be. Uh, but there are days that you really wish you'd rather have volunteered to do a different job. So, Sean, what am I missing with that?
Uh, there, I think some other hard things that I've experienced, um, I mean, there's great things too, trust me. Graduation is the pinnacle of board work when you get to shake the hands and of course, last year, we didn't shake anybody's hands, but we actually were there, we had ceremonies, we get to say congratulations to all the graduates um, from both high schools and RPA. And I'll tell you, that is the pinnacle, that's the joy at, and it really kind of jazzes you up going into the end of the school year, going forward through the summer for the next school year, to really be ramped up and excited to see these kids accomplish the goals that they've set forth for themselves. Um, it's a wonderful celebration and that's the pinnacle. But I, I have um, part of the job too is um, dealing with um, expulsions when they've been brought to the board and um, you have to be prepared for that. Um, it's very heartbreaking, um, no matter what way you think about what's happening. And we're talking about kids' lives and their futures. Um, so it's very serious, serious work. Um, definitely getting on to all the committees, insurance created a couple other committees that I really appreciate. But um, there's the bargaining committee, the finance committee, the um, policy committee, the um, facilities committee, and then there was the bond committee at two different times. I was on the very first bond committee when I, I wouldn't say the very first, but during my board tenure, I wasn't on the last bond committee. Um, but those things are very rewarding, um, as you um, get to work through other parts outside of the board room, um, that you get to discuss um, and learn more about the board work and, and have an influence on those things as we go forward. So, I think that's it, Sharon. There might be more.
Josh, was there, was there any, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just was gonna ask when the budget meeting was?
Wednesday night.
Yeah. Wednesday night, okay. Is it Redmond School District website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, was there any follow-up questions from that?
No, that was excellent. Uh, but I know John Duff had a question, kind of a follow-up, I think.
Yeah, um, I just had a quick question if, um, since you all are gonna be working very close with Dr. Klein. Um, if you've all had an opportunity, and you can just raise your hands because we're, we're pretty much out of time. If you've had an opportunity to meet with him personally and, and share your concerns and uh, with him and about being on the school board. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I was a little late there. Um, I've actually been working with Dr. Klein for probably six months or more now on one of the special assigned task forces for the Redmond School District, the Equity Task Force. And actually just through that work, um, that I decided he was a good enough guy that I wouldn't mind working with him.
Thank you, everybody. I'm so sorry, we are very much out of time and uh, the board members still need to meet for a couple minutes, so we're gonna have to wrap this up. But I just want to say thank you again for your time. Thank you so much for um, for being willing to support our community and the way, and our children, the way that you are and um, have a wonderful rest of your day and we wish you all very well. Thank you.
I just remind you that this video will be available on our website tonight sometime. Uh, I gotta warn you, we're having an issue with Google, the Google link to our site. So accesses, uh, uh, access us directly at www redmondcoannis.org. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you all. Bye-bye.